Okay, um, good evening, everyone. We're still waiting on a couple of planning commission members, but uh.
Talk slow.
So I will talk, I will talk slow, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, it's Monday, February 24th, 2025. This is, this is a meeting of the planning commission of the town of Warren, Vermont. And calling the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Um, the first item on the agenda is agenda changes. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to the uh, or do we need to vote to approve the agenda?
No.
No, okay. Uh, hearing none, we'll move on to review and approve the previous minutes. Do people need a minute to read the previous minutes? Let's take a minute to read. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve uh, the previous minutes from February 10th, 2025. Do you have a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Uh, the minutes from uh, our prior meeting are approved. Um, next topic on the agenda is general public comments. On the agenda is a discussion of housing. So I'd probably hold off on public comments on those till the end of the presentations. Does anyone, are any members of the public present who would like to make comments?
Any comments, Devin? No, we're happy to see you.
Thank you for being with us. Um, okay, um, so with no public comments. Uh, unfortunately, um, tonight on the agenda uh, is the fourth item, a discussion with, we're gonna reverse the order. Darcy Jameson, VP of Development at Beacon Communities LLC. Um, and uh, also we have Joshua Schwartz and Sam Robinson from the MRVPD. If I could make a quick introductory comment, I think probably most folks are familiar. Certainly folks on the PPC are familiar.
Awesome.
Everyone certainly.
Uh, no, 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 we're glad you're here. Sort of the genesis of this meeting, well, for a long time we've wanted to have it, we're hoping that Darcy and Josh and Sam come to talk to us. In particular with the town of Warren, um, the select board, uh, deep in discussions of relocating the town garage. Uh, you know, it's been a long firm goal of the Warren Planning Commission to. You know, perhaps, I mean, further investigations you needed, but perhaps that would be a charrette. Done 20 years ago, I believe Jim reminded us, was um, done that suggested that site is a great site for a housing project. There may be other sites as well, uh, about uh, around town. Um, and we just wanted to make sure that. We're doing our diligence and a few things that the planning commission should be doing, whether it's neighborhood designations. Or exploring sources of funding. To make sure we've done, at least done our homework and tried to elevate that issue. You know, to the folks in town. With that, uh, Darcy has agreed to go first.
Yeah.
And we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Okay, um, hi, everyone. And this addition is Adam.
Yeah. During the visioning session this summer, yeah, nice to see you.
Do you know, have you met Jim Crow, do you know Jim Sanford?
Yes.
Do you know Macon Phillips online?
No, hi, Macon.
Macon's my neighbor.
Hi, Darcy, Darcy, did we meet at an event?
Yeah, at the fundraiser.
Yeah, it's nice to see you again.
You too. Uh, you were part of my motivation to agree to come do this.
All right, well, that's great to hear. I'm, I'm really, really excited. Yeah, nice to see you again.
Thanks, um. I'm just gonna caveat a little bit, even though Liz was said, don't caveat at all. You know, my, and I'll talk about my background, but I haven't been tapped into all the housing stuff going on in the valley that closely. So I'm gonna sort of just go kind of big picture and look forward to learning and seeing if there are other ways I can contribute as I learn more about this, the work here. So I'm gonna do this a little formally, just so I know it's recorded and.
Please.
So, Darcy Jameson, um, some of you know me, some of you don't. But just by way of background, I grew up down in Coochie, Vermont. My dad came with the team from Boston in the early seventies that developed Coochie, so guess a little bit of it in my blood. And I split my time between Warren and my professional life is in Boston. Just by way of background, um, I have a master's in urban planning and policy with a focus on real estate development and affordable housing finance and policy. I spent the early part of my career doing private consulting and affordable housing. Four years as the director of housing for the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts. And for a little over 20 years, I've been the vice president of development at Beacon Communities Development, a Boston-based uh, development company. So I'm here, sort of in my role as Darcy, community member, but drawing heavily on my professional work experience. Beacon is a for-profit, mission-driven, affordable housing developer and property manager. We have about 20,000 rental apartments. Projects are large scale, most of my stuff and my teams are between sort of 75 and 175 units. 75 to $150 million range, so slightly different scale. And we really take advantage of the federal low-income housing tax credit program, which is obviously not a resource that's available in the valley, but more in urban areas. The projects that we do are publicly subsidized and they are deed restricted to ensure long-term availability. So through the federal tax credit program, you know, you're building to target a certain income level and then you're deed restricting that. And then a professional management company to ensure eligibility, compliance with all the federal, state and local financing regulations, including income, household size, fair housing, stuff that probably you're all familiar with. But just worth mentioning, because it is part of the context of if you are gonna be using any type of federal, state or potentially local money, oftentimes there are requirements that come with it. So, the question that I always get is like, what is affordable housing? And people throw all that term around very loosely. So I always just like to step back and say affordable is what your household. Can afford for rent or mortgage. And not be paying more than 30% of your income on rent and utilities and insurance. Or you can apply that to your mortgage, homeowner's insurance or condo fee, et cetera. So, before I sort of go into some of the numbers, I just want everyone to pause for a second and think about how much money you earn. Think about how much money your kids earn. Think about maybe a parent who's on a fixed income and what they earn. Think about if you didn't have any savings or any generational wealth that has come your way. Uh, if you just had to go out tomorrow and get a job, like, how much could you earn? And I think that's important, because I think it just brings it down to the personal level, because everybody thinks affordable housing, like, that's for other people. But if you really think about what you earn, what your parents might have for income, kids, people you know, love and respect and what they earn. It makes it a little bit more personal. So, let's say you earn forty, $40,000 a year, times 30% is $12,000, times divided by 12 months, you can afford $1,000. A month in rent, because I don't think $40,000 is nothing for a salary. But if you think about what that translates to and sort of what you can afford to pay. And if you wanted to purchase a home on that salary, let's say it's a $150,000 house, you've got the $30,000 down payment. That's about what you could afford um, at 40,000 a year. You know, these are all rough numbers, but, and then just kind of going on from there, $60,000 a year salary, 1,500 a month. And you guys can see the numbers. And so I think it's just kind of sometimes helpful to kind of get some context. I went online today to see what I could rent in the area. Nothing, you know, for almost, uh, almost at any price point, unless I had five or six roommates and someone willing to rent me one of their big houses. So, people always ask me, like, where have you seen the most success in a community? To create housing that is affordable for people. And I'm not using the term affordable housing, I'm, because that comes with all kinds of connotations and definitions in various contexts. But just housing that's affordable to the people that, us and to the people we know. It's communities where there is incredibly strong political leadership. And people are out in front and they are vocal, they're, the political leadership is actively supporting public and private initiatives that increase supply. And you know, an example, a perfect example would be, if I think of Warren, just Sugar Bush and supporting them to build employee housing. And I'll say a little more on, on the supply stuff and political leadership. Create a permitting and zoning framework that's clear, predictable and supports the creation of new housing supply. People who develop housing are in business. And when you do rental housing or homeownership, you put out a tremendous amount of money as a developer. Before you get any of that money back. And if the project doesn't go through. You know, completion and you rent or sell, you don't get that pre-development money back. So whether that's paying for your architect for feasibility study or some engineering studies or talking to your lawyers or coming to a couple of meetings, I mean, it's time and it's money. So in communities where they've spent the time to create that clear framework to support the creation of new housing. Are what the communities where I have seen some of the most success. And then communities using all the tools in the toolbox to help increase supply. Most of us have probably taken economics, it's kind of simple supply and demand. If you can increase supply, you start to take pressure off everywhere else in the market. Even if it's not sort of capital A, affordable deed restricted, just supply. Um, so increasing the supply, especially in a small community, is really incremental. Um, there's no place in Warren, maybe even Waitsfield, maybe even in the valley where we're probably gonna build a couple of hundred apartments all at once. And so I like to think about it as just a very much an incremental process. So in the private developer, and not even developer, just the private person world, right? Having clear permitting and zoning, um, it's predictable and flexible, doing things like smaller lot zoning. Um, you know, creating feasibility for accessory dwelling units. I mean, you guys are the experts in sort of the rural, more rural community opportunities, but I think. Just anywhere that can create a couple of units or apartments creates opportunity for housing that hopefully is more affordable to people. And as I said, you can't say just affordable, because it's based on your household. And then certainly there are the public or sort of public nonprofit partnership sponsored developments to create what I would sort of call like, like capital A affordable housing. Maybe more akin to what I'm doing, which is kind of long-term deed restricted, using public resources. And an initiative really kind of driven by a local nonprofit or. And I say public nonprofit, because a lot of times communities are not set up to actually be the developer, but maybe they partner with a nonprofit. You know, in the case of Beacon, we're for-profit, mission-driven, function very much in the role of maybe a nonprofit partner. And ways, obviously, that the public sector can participate are, to the extent that they have money, that they have land, much like the um, garage, which I think would be a perfect location for apartments. So I just wanted to do a quick example, which I sort of touched on a few minutes ago, and I have like just one or two more slides and I'll, I'll wrap it up. But if you think about an annual household income of 80,000, I'm not talking about an individual necessarily, but household income, 80,000, 30% of that a month is 24,000, you can afford about $2,000 a month. So on the next slide, I just wanna do, I'm gonna do a little bit of the, the high levels kind of sources and uses, if you're looking at like a 10-unit development project. I have made these numbers up, but with. A background in finance and making some assumptions. I don't know what everything costs in the valley, so, you know, I just, I made some assumptions. But they're probably within like, striking distance, at least conceptually. So I'm just making this up, a 10-unit rental project, uh, where I'm sort of thinking, let's target households that are earning about $80,000. A year, so they can spend about $2,000 a month. And in the background, I did a bunch of the math on that, what the operating costs would be for whoever owns it and is renting.
So the slide on the, on the monitor is quite difficult for me to see.
Okay.
Could you talk through it a little bit?
Yes, I'm going to. Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, so this is just assuming, I'm just making up a 10-unit rental project. Trying to target households at 80% of the, I'm making $80,000 rather, um, so they can afford about $2,000 a month. And what I was gonna say, they did a bunch of the math kind of in the background. So let's assume, based on the income that you would get and then subtracting out operating costs that whoever is property managing this would need to pay. Real estate taxes, maintenance, all that stuff. Maybe you can support a first mortgage of 1.5 million dollars. So then, you go over to the uses side. And so you have land acquisition. Um, again, I made up $200,000, but if it's a town-owned site, maybe it's free until that $200,000 becomes zero. Construction. I estimated $200,000 per unit in Boston there, 700,000 a unit in construction costs. So I decided a third of that for around here was maybe reasonable. I have no idea.
For an apartment.
To build it, to, to building it.
I think that's way low.
A unit, not for the 10 unit. Okay, yeah, it might be quite low. So just, again, bear with me. So, the concepts will apply no matter what. So then I threw on a 5% contingency. And then you've got development costs, you've gotta pay an engineer. And uh, an architect, legal title, survey, marketing, real estate taxes, construction loan interest, you've got a whole list of costs. Maybe you get some of that pro bono, but let's just, this is just the math, if you're just gonna put together a project. I estimated 40,000 a unit, um, you know, I still think that's low. But I just, to put some numbers in.
And you have all the site costs too, bringing in electric, septic.
I'm assuming that's all in the construction, so. But again, Jim, I, I just follow this conceptually and not if the numbers are exactly right, because the concept will be the same. There's a gap. And then you've gotta pay someone to do this, people, maybe you have someone who's doing this 100% pro bono, but let's assume not, and I'm just gonna pay them a 10% fee on the costs. So you have, you can support a million and a half in a first mortgage, you've got about a $3 million or $4 million nut. So you've got about a million and a half gap. So where does that money come from? If you are trying to build housing that is affordable to a certain group, grants? You know, maybe there are state resources, probably not many of the federal resources.
In this environment right now, they're all getting dried up.
So that's the other, you know, if you look at this slide, is kind of how you fill that, fill that gap. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. So, I just wanted to. Oh, so what I was going to say is if, you know, so how does anybody make a development project work? Well, I made some assumptions about setting a pretty reasonable rent for a certain income level. Obviously, um, a private developer is going to be maximizing, you know, what they can charge for rent or sell for. And then they're gonna do that first, and then they're gonna come over here and say, how does that look in terms of my sources and uses balancing? So this is really simplistic, but I feel like every time I have a conversation with various people about creating housing. This is really what it comes down to. It's like, understanding what your sources and uses are and where those resources could potentially come from. Very different here than in the affordable housing world that I work in, but concepts are still consistent. So takeaways. There aren't any magic bullets. And political leadership to support all housing creation, so that you're just generally increasing supply. I think is just an important one. This is a project that I built out in Western Mass, uh, in Amherst, 120 apartments with first floor commercial. It was an old industrial sawmill site. It's, the town of Amherst did a master plan, they talked with the community, they talked about what was important. In this case, they wanted to create more housing that was both market rate and affordable. They wanted commercial, they wanted to create a destination place in North Amherst, Massachusetts. Uh, there was a private owner, they'd been looking around for sites where this might happen. The private owner was ultimately introduced to me. I said, let's see what we can put together for a deal. And this was using federal tax credit program, it was quite a big project. But I highlighted because it was driven by the town of Amherst leadership and planning team saying, we wanna create more housing, we wanna create more commercial business opportunities. You know, they had a, a goal of a master plan, they wanted to reuse this vacant. Um, underutilized industrial site, they knew what they kind of wanted for a housing mix, they wanted to create, you know, sustainable housing. They reached out proactively to put together a team of partners. And then we took it from there, taking ownership of the site and putting together the capital stack and the development plan and. Continuing to build support for it in the community, which, you know, didn't go perfectly smoothly. There were people who were definitely excited about it, others who weren't.
Sounds like I was built in.
But it's an example of where the political leadership really stepped out and said, we want this to happen, it's actually going to happen. And let's work together to compromise on things that are important to people.
So there, there's no, they, have they gotten that all taken care of? Have they been shoveled to earth yet?
Oh yeah, I'm done, fully leased up.
Oh, okay.
The commercials are tremendous success and all of our abutters who oppose the project have coffee and shop in the general store daily.
And they walk there.
And they walk. Uh, so I'll stop there, but for whatever nuggets that offers, um, it was hard to sort of keep it short and sweet, but.
No, I think that was really good.
What, you know what the um, square foot cost comes out on your, on your phantom project there?
I mean, if you just assumed a thousand, a thousand square foot a unit.
Okay, thousand square foot per unit, and how much did they cost?
Oh, uh.
To bill?
Are you talking about my project in Amherst?
No, your, your fake project.
Oh, I mean, I, I threw in $200,000 a unit, so 200 bucks a square foot.
What about the real one? How about the real project, not the phantom project?
Yeah, okay. Just, just curious.
I have, I have no foundation for what it costs up here.
Okay, but do you know the, in Amherst, for a cost of possibly first square foot?
No, no, she said she did.
Oh, yeah, for Amherst, oh gosh, it was quite a few years ago. I mean, it was a lot, we had a big, we did huge demolition and a big commercial component and residential.
It's complicated.
Um, it's, you know, it's a, it's a market rate development with a, with a 20% affordable component, so it's fully amenitized. I could look, I mean, I'm happy.
Units probably has no bearing.
Okay, so the Amherst project had some, had some regular rental and sales part of it, and then, and affordable portion of it.
No sales, it's 100% rental. It was a mix of 80% market and 20% affordable. We normally do mostly 100% affordable. In this case, we are responding directly to the community request for a mixed income community. But I wanted to spend a couple of minutes to sort of on kind of political leadership, a little bit on sort of incomes, just to help you think about. That, and then just some of the numbers of a development project, which could easily be, I mean, that's the framework, right, that you then refine.
Yeah, I, I really greatly appreciate that framework being described in a clean fashion, because prior to this meeting. Uh, I sort of like, brain mapped parts of what you were saying and wasn't quite sure how to organize it. And here it is, organized. So it's nice to see like a table with line items of how you would approach.
And my real spreadsheet is about eight tabs and a little tongue behind each number, but I just, I condensed and, and made up some numbers.
Great. Um, would it be possible for me to riff off of everything that we just presented, or is there something?
No, I, 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 I think so, of course, Joshua and Sam are gonna get their presentation, but I think.
And Camila has a question.
And, but I think we should take questions for Darcy.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Hi, Darcy. Um, that was, I jumped in there, but really good information, I appreciate that. One question I had was, on one of the slides, you mentioned, you know, what, what communities, uh, what are the aspects of communities that have been most supportive? And I think you had predictable slash flexible in the planning zoning. And, and, and when I read that, um. I'm, they can be conflicting, to be predictable, but also flexible, flexible? So if you can talk a little bit more about that.
Predictable, that, that zoning is clear and people understand the roadmap of what they can build. So that they know if I come in with X, you know, it'll be as of right. So maybe flexible wasn't, wasn't the best term. I, I think sort of flexible in my mind is just broadening your zoning. To give people the most opportunity to be able to create tiny home, an accessible dwelling unit. You know, another home on a property, and I know all the other challenges that come with some of these suggestions, whether it's septic or whatever it might be. But um, communities working to, taking the political leadership to try and help solve some of those challenges. And give people the opportunity to be able to create more housing. Sort of the takeaway.
Okay, great.
I don't know if you guys have all heard this, but there are communities that are doing away with single-family zoning. And every single lot, Cambridge, Mass is doing this, every single lot has multifamily buy right.
We have, we have a lot of that, in the new zone, in the new land use development regulations. I think all but one or two of the, of the zones in town have multifamily buy right.
Yeah, that's terrific.
And we actually, I think in some, or did we put it under conditionally, is in our current regs, we have duplexes, which we added at some point, we didn't always have it. And we've just, we've done even more from there. The new regs have just about any, anything. When it comes to residential. Devin?
Hi, Darcy.
Hi, Ellen.
Just a clarification question, like, for example, with the Amherst, Mass project.
Yeah.
I think you implied that your company comes in and purchases the property.
We did.
And so, and so then you maintain ownership of that and operating of it?
Yes.
And is that typical, like, is that how it usually works? If we're looking at a developer coming in, say for the town garage site, right? Are we looking for someone to, to take ownership of that property and develop the project on their own and then continue ownership in perpetuity with rentals? Or is there a model by which we hire someone who does that for the town and then it's saleable?
Yes, any of the above. So it's, that would be your decision. So you could put out, um, a request for proposals for a development, a developer partner, who would come in and, for rental. Who, you know, you decide you want ten apartments and you ask them, you pay them, you know, it's a, you pay them a fee to do all the development work. And then you need somebody to property manage, right? So property manage. And if you use federal and state money or local money to do it, you're probably gonna trigger, you know, all. Income, appropriate household size, et cetera, right? So you can't be renting to, you know, eight of the J1 students, right? You're gonna trigger, um, which is fine, you know, you, you are targeting a certain group. So they've gotta have property management experience that comes with understanding of how to implement all those federal, state, local regulations. If you don't have any public money in it somehow, then you can still have it be rental and they can rent it to, you know, whoever qualifies. And, and maybe it's at a higher price point, but any supply that you create takes pressure off of other. And that's, if I, nobody leaves with anything else here, I think that that's what is important, like, there's no magic bullet. If you get super hyper-focused on doing one thing, it's in our show, like, not me doing anything, right? But anything we can do that creates more.
So even if you were creating 20 units at a higher price point rental. Right, so even if you were creating twenty units at a, a higher price point rental, that maybe that income or the, the profit from that, can you start, um, going into a bucket to pay to build lower income or?
Yeah, you saw the chart. I mean, you can generate a project that has profit. Project, it covers cost of that, but I want to answer your question about the for sale. Yes, you can also put a, an RFP for someone to develop for sale condos.
Yeah.
Um, again, numbers have to work.
Yeah.
Um, but if you want to create a situation at the town garage where it's per, it's clean, it's like shovel ready, if you can, it's permitted, um, and make it very easy. But then someone has to do those numbers and see if they can make it work. And if there's a gap, then it's an effort to, to problem solve that. Um, you know, and that's stuff. I'm happy to help think through a little bit more with, with people, but it's, you know, it's just making some decisions and testing the market and.
Right.
Um, but anybody who, and I don't know if there are, who the nonprofit developers are in the valley or if there are any. Um,
Yeah, the players are, the players.
But they're still, they're still in business, right? They still need to be able to.
Yeah. Are you familiar with a mechanism by which you can s- sell a property with a deed restriction to maintain affordability? That's sort of one of the things that we've.
Yes.
Spent around.
Yes.
Perpetual affordability.
Yes. So, so that, so that's easy. That's just like a legal document.
Yeah.
When you do that, it's similar to the chart that I put up. It's you're restricting the affordability and price points, whether it's sales or rental income, which drives, you know, supportable mortgage. So, you can do it, but you're going to have, you're going to have a gap in your sources. And so then the question is, how do you fill that?
Yeah.
So everything you just described is absolutely doable. It just has some a flip side.
Honorary lacking.
Probably.
And a note on, on costs. I think you could probably just use Massachusetts numbers here. People often assume it's less expensive to build here and it can be the opposite.
Yeah, I'm sure. Um.
Yeah.
Just so you. Didn't want to make it look so dismal.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the option.
Before making, I know you have a comment, but Adam actually started off saying he wanted, he wanted to make a comment.
No, if I start rolling, it's going to be something, maybe I'll wait till after Sam and Joshua. Yeah, that might be.
Okay, alright.
Go ahead, Megan.
Oh, I was just first, I, I really appreciate, um, just the act of putting numbers down on paper and, and it really helps just to kind of help put shape, you know, make things real and, and, and just coming in with your experience and, uh, I think to Adam's point really, uh, uh, clarifies a lot. So thanks so much for the, the, the time and, and, and presenting that. Um, you know, I, one of the things that I just, the thing that made me want to make a comment was this idea about how any housing is good housing, and I think that's true. Um, and we've seen that with the Sugar Bush Housing for their J ones and sort of this idea that like that's going to take pressure off. Um, and we've seen it, um, you know, with other arguments, but I think what's really different about this is it's public land. And, uh, in that sense, I think there's just a lot of opportunity to, to do something that the market wouldn't do. Um, and if we look at the situation right now, um, you know, it's only getting worse. And the reality is, and I guess this is my question for you, um, is given the federal landscape, you know, just how, how much do you anticipate the way these projects are funded changing? I mean, I, I don't want to get loaded, you know, politically with this. Maybe some people think we should get rid of HUD, but that seems to be part of what could be happening and if, at the very least, it's disruption. So I'm just curious about how much can we take what we've learned on in the past and apply it here, um, in, in the months ahead.
Um, it's been a rough day. I'll just tell you that, like watching what's going on, landscape, um. I, I don't even know what to say. Um, I have two projects in the last week that we're, um, we're stepping away from. Because we're, there's just going to be too much uncertainty at the federal level. We have twenty thousand apartments, probably eighty percent of which rely on project based section eights. There are extensive discussions about cutting back how much their, you know, HUD's willing to fund, um. Can't continue to operate your buildings if you lose eighty percent of your income, your insurance, your real estate taxes, snow removal, staffing, like none of those costs go away. Um, so, you know, I, it's,
Yeah.
I agree with you wholeheartedly that it's public land and so it's an opportunity to do something, um, the market wouldn't do, but I think the flip side is devil's advocate, not advocating for this or not just saying is, you could sit on that piece of property for a long time if you can't put together the resources to, to build something. So as a community, it might be thinking about, you know, if there is a developer who thinks they can put together a project, um, do you consider it? I'm not advocating either way.
Well, the silver lining, the silver lining, as Jim can share, is that the current tenant of that property isn't exactly boogying out of there, it seems like. And so, you know, I think if anything, time has been available on this parcel. So I mean, I, I'm excited to see what goes next. It sounds like the garage is like, got a track on a way out, but it's not like we're behind the curve, if that makes sense. So, um, anyway, all, all the options are good to understand and the climate's good to understand. And I guess the, 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 the way I'd ask you in a different way is, do you see projects like this succeed without federal money? Right? Like as we look at the turbulence from Washington, is it still the case that stuff like this, there's, there's nonprofits, the state funds, like there's resources out there to help do something that the market wouldn't do? Or, or is it really kind of freezing up right now?
Um, I don't know. I don't know sort of what federal money, other than maybe some Homer, some CBG grant money that might flow to the local, so it's pretty hard to put together an income restricted sort of affordable housing project without federal and state resources. Um, and I wouldn't put nonprofit in, in the mix there. They don't have any money. Like they might be your development partner, but.
I was thinking more like the Champlain Housing Trust and sort of like, um, what I would call non-government actors, but people who have big treasuries. I just don't know where they're moving now that federal dollars are getting weird. So that's, that was what I was asking.
It's not, I'll just say, I don't think it's going to be any easier.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, those are tough questions. I, so I appreciate the answers and I know it's all changing every day, but, um, really, really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm always happy to obviously continue the conversation.
Awesome.
Um, you guys up, you want to?
Yeah, thank you so much, Darcy.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I guess I'll leave Zoom, right? And then I'll just stay here. Um, you guys want to put up here?
Yeah, sure.
I'll move back.
Um, while Josh is getting set up, again, I think everyone at the planning district and at the select board is very familiar. Josh and Sam are from the Mad River Valley Planning District, our sort of super, uh, planning commission. Um, shared between Warren, Wakefield and Fiston. Josh is the executive director, has been for, how many years, Joshua?
Sixteen, sixteen plus.
Yay.
And, and again, I want to, before, before Joshua gets started, I, I do want to tip my hat. I think so many of the ideas we've been working on at the planning commission really, um, the MRVPD was really, um, the sort of the inspiration and the engine. So, you know, for what, for the progress we've made on short-term rental tracking, again, for the importance of affordable housing, I would, call me, you know, I was a skeptic, I think, that, that the towns could do anything. Or should maybe even, should even bother thinking about doing anything on affordable housing when I first joined the MRVPD and I thank them for a wonderful education. Um, with that, I will shut up.
Those are great words. Um, and it's an absolute pleasure to be here, everybody. Thank you for having Sam and I. Um, I'm just trying to line up my little, my, my, my little window here. Um, so, thank you. Um, and Dan does a great job representing the planning commission, uh, from Warren, um, and prior to him, Jim Sanford for, prior to the time I was there, um, uh, and. Yeah, and, and the mix of faces that I've known and ones that I did, I haven't, so it's great to meet you. Um, uh, so, thank you, Darcy. That was really great. And I think you provided both like sort of an outside larger sort of context all the way down to what the numbers are. And I, and I think it, it will complement really quickly the couple of things that I wanted to, to, to chat about. So I wanted to share, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Sam and I have chatted, um, and just want to be a resource to the town and share some of the resources and thoughts that we have or have had and see if they're, they're helpful. I jotted things down in the notes and then I put them in a PowerPoint because that seemed like an easier way to, to share. Um, but I'm a big fan of context, so I want to start with the sort of like background context and make sure I know where things are at. Um, and throw them up on the screen, but one is that the town of Warren has sought to, specifically about the municipal garage, um, to move it out of its, its village for a couple of decades. And it seems like it's finally happening. And the town's preparing a municipal owned land, um, uh, municipal land on Vermont one hundred to accommodate the new garage. And as such, the existing site located at School Road, adjacent to Warren Elementary School may become available to accommodate a housing project. And for years, the planning commission and the select board have intended to facilitate a housing project at this location, identified in the two thousand nineteen Warren Town Plan, uh, which says potential redevelopment opportunities for the existing town garage site include developing six to ten units of affordable housing. A phase two environmental assessment of the existing site was completed in two thousand eight. That was news to me. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Um, and it showed that no environmental concerns need to be remedied.
It's got to be redone.
Of course it does, right? Of course it does. But that, you know, just identified that. And then other sort of background and context, Maken and Jenny from your planning commission met with Sam and I, um, just over a year ago to discuss workforce, how, housing warranted, um, identifying data, resources, organizations and things of that sort. So that was sort of larger context. The, you know, status as far as I understand, and this is, this is what I was hoping to clarify, that the PC is exploring opportunities for future ha- housing at this location, beginning a dialogue to frame the opportunity and identify a process and considerations. Um, so sort of like not over the skis a- as it were, just sort of, um, uh, exploring. The planning district's been invited to join the dialogue, with us being here. Um, the select board created a town garage task force and hired VHB to develop draft plans. And despite intent, as identified in an article about reporter this past summer, that a twenty twenty five town meeting bond vote for a new town garage will be happening, that's not happening and an informational overview will be held instead of town meeting. Um, uh, and seeking additional community input to be incorporated into the design and, uh, and influence a potential future bond vote. Is that the status as far as?
Uh, yeah, um, yes, I mean, we've, we've got a design, we've got a presentation to make at town meeting and, um, uh, I think the, uh, the, in the con, in the architectural contract right now is uh, five hundred thousand dollars to dismantle the existing structure and clean up the site and stuff. I think we're going to separate that out and, uh, leave that for another well, or another deal.
Okay.
Um, it's just the, the construction costs are so, well, are so high that, that, well, Devin can speak more to that than I, but at, at least that's the one, my last.
That was our last conversation at, from like our mini group.
Yeah.
Um, we had a little bit of a conversation with Wyman Land Fair and the select board with respect to the five hundred thousand dollar earmark for that site. And we decided not necessarily not to move forward, but to allow it to exist as a line item and let the voters tell us what they'd like to see come town meeting day. Because what we're dealing with is a really expensive project and we want to see it happen. And if we need to put that on the back burner and, and find a different way to do it that maybe costs less and doesn't have the contingencies associated and the overhead from having a firm manage it, maybe that makes sense. If they say no, we want that housing ready, put it in the bond, then we'll put it in the bond.
I mean, one, that's one, one of the appealing things about, one of the many appealing things about moving the town garage out is the opportunity for something cool to happen where it is now.
Right.
And I think some people feel like, well, that's, that's a great part of the deal. We got to do that.
Right, okay.
So.
Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, great. Um, and as far as I understand, the general site characteristics we're talking about, you know, I just threw them on there, but the, the town garage location, which I think it's E nine one addresses, one nineteen School Road, um, the parcel ID, the town of Warren be the owner. The parcel is forty point six acres, which includes the Warren School and Brooksfield, but the town garage existing land area is approximately whether it's currently, you've been utilized with town garage is about an acre and a half. I'm going to show you how I, how I came to that, but I, I just threw up a couple of quick maps of here is the, uh, the lot per the, uh, AMR Atlas, um, that's zooming in. And that's my really quick. It, it's super blurry because of what I'm showing you, but.
I, I think you have to figure out, um, is, is the shaded area in the lower left of the, the stream setback?
It, this is just the area that's currently. Whether or not that's all developable or not, because of stream setbacks and such, I don't know.
Uh, there is, we, when the planning commission did a rough look at this thing, you know, fifteen years ago, we did identify that, uh, further to the west there.
Yeah.
Uh, there's some, yeah, in that area and along the stream, back fifty feet from the stream, of course.
Yeah.
But there, there was some additional.
Yeah.
I will also add, if you, there's any federal money, and then I don't know what the state regs are, if you are within the five hundred year flood plain, not the hundred, the five hundred change. And if the one more nuanced than that, um, it triggers a whole nother can of worms. So worth checking sooner than later. I've had two sites fall out of feasibility in the last month because of the, the regs that came into effect in twenty twenty five. Um, but like Homer block grant money in the deal would, would trigger. I'm happy to spend more time.
Yes.
Like, probably spent a hundred hours on this in the last month. They're terrible. Um, but anyway, it'd be worth looking at and how close you are to everything.
Yeah, and so there's a river corridor zone to the left, um, which is shaded there in that, in that yellow. Um, but again, I was just sort of like on a contextual place.
Yeah.
That, I just want to make sure what I was looking at is what everybody's, like, we're looking at the same thing together. Um, I didn't do any pre-development things or looked at setbacks and such. It was just, I tried, I tried making a, a, a poly, a polygon where I went around everything that looked like it was developed, including a sand pile, because, because there's one foot contours on there. So they were like, woo, this big mountain. But, but that notwithstanding, right, assuming that that can be moved easily enough, um, it's an acre and a half. Is what, is what.
So six.
Six.
Unit?
Units?
Well, if a quarter acre zoning, that'd be, that'd be six. Now, if we could do multi-family in those, um, maybe as many as twelve, right?
So you're doing the thing, but I, I'm, it's awesome. And I'm also going to ask you not to. Because I want to talk about process.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Because the, uh, then, and just some thoughts that I have on process, right? The intent, the, the exciting thing is that we go to essentially the product. Right? Like, what, what can we do? How much can we get? Right? Like, we, we do that when we shop. We go, and, and such. It's just like, how far will my dollar take me? Um, and what I, uh, there's an author by the name of Simon Sinek who wrote a book in two thousand nine called Start With Why, which I really appreciate and the, the subtitle is How Great Leaders Inspire Everyone to Take Action. But it's in the entrepreneurship and sort of business genre of books, but really what it focuses on, um, it focuses on leadership and, uh, and, and success, but the, one of the quotes is, people don't buy, this is about, again, business, so about purchasing. But people don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it and what you do simply proves what you believe. So the what or the outcome, um, originates in the why or the purpose. And the question is, what is the purpose? What is the why of doing a project for the town? Um, and there's a lot of crossover to planning, community planning. There's like visions, goals and implementation, right? Like that's a structure of, of the municipal plan, of all the municipal plans in the state and specifically Warren's visions, goals and implementation. But I think why is a, is a deeper question than just what the goal is, but why are you doing this project? And I, um, and, and one of the tools that Simon Sinek uses in his book is this gold. And I, and, and one of the tools that Simon Sinek uses in his book is this golden circle that gets into the why, the how and the what. And so, you know, it's tempting to jump into what the project will look like and what the outcomes will be. Also, what are the opportunities and how far can we take it? But I recommend establishing the purpose of the project upfront or the sort of, what is the purpose or the cause for housing or for what would happen here? And then the second is the how, which is the process built off the strengths and the values. And then last is the outcome. The, the, the sort of what. And most people start from the outside and go in. And, and I, and this is something I've been doing with a lot of the work that, at the Planning District is thinking about things about the why and sort of distilling what is the purpose for it. Because what I, you know, there are lots of directions that a housing project can go. There's private, there's public-private partnerships, there's regional workforce housing developers and there's a lot of different roles, but really establishing why a project here upfront, I think is really important. And at its essence, like, what are we trying to address? And who is it serving? And allow those, those answers to guide the exploratory process of what the opportunities are. Because there's lots of different funding opportunities and, you know, we haven't got into like AMI, but fifty percent area median income or eighty percent AMI or a hundred percent AMI or a hundred and twenty percent AMI, which are tied to funding sources. And I think it's easy to talk to, to those who have products that are available, but truly what is the why for this project is, is just a question that I, I think is useful to, to ask. And I've noticed specifically in, in a variety of different projects, but specifically housing in other parts of the state, is that well-intentioned projects identified, they go down the road and then somewhere down that road, people start asking that question. Why are we doing this? Why are we doing it for those people? Why are we doing it in this way? And I think establishing that upfront can help guide this sort of like tree of decision-making that, that comes subsequent. So obviously, the answer is truly a mixture of purpose and process and opportunity and scarcity of resources that truly influence where things end up. But I, I think starting with the why or the purpose first, I think is, 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 is a good, is my advice as a way to move forward. And questions about that in particular? I know that's kind of like a bigger, bigger thing.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense.
And then I, this slide doesn't really fit in the sequence of everything that I had before, but I just like, I wrote down what are like elements of the work. Identifying what the community wants for housing, psych constraint analysis, environmental cleanup work, regulatory analysis, conceptual plan, implementation, phasing, identifying funding sources, not necessarily all one at a time in that, in that order. But, but those are elements of the work that I thought were really helpful. I also threw together, again, these were like notes that I had, so it's not in a, in a clean presentation, but some of my thoughts. Looking at some other communities, they've done things like put together kind of a brain trust or like something beyond the planning commission. At least early on to bring, to sort of frame an understanding of the sort of key pathway trajectory or the, the, the different elements that can make a project successful. And I've identified like some of those areas of expertise. Everything from private, public land development agreements, like a local lawyer that might be willing to do pro bono work and survey agreements, water and septic specialty, project finance. And I've identified a handful of, of those, oh, sorry, at our landscape. Yeah. Workforce housing experience, those who have experienced in the state, EverNorth, this nonprofit organization that merged with Housing Vermont and Northern New England Housing Investment Fund in twenty twenty. A Downstreet Housing Community Development, that's our, our Central Vermont Regional Home Ownership Organization and the largest affordable housing developer in the area. In the real estate development office. You know, I don't know if commercial is at all on the table or of interest, but there's opportunities with, with commercial and housing projects. And those with social mission, construction experience. Like, looking at some other projects that I've seen at the state, having a variety of different perspectives at the table to sort of explore these things and see what does it take and lean on those expertise, I think is useful. Some of my other thoughts are things like development visuals, not that I need to tell this planning commission that you, you guys understand the importance of development visuals. But there's some great examples down in the Wyndham and Wizard Housing, Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust that worked with UMass Springfield, the school and did a variety of, of visioning work. Their opportunities roll into the bond vote, other funding to help make the lot more housing development ready. I guess I think that goes to the question that you were talking about before. That was a question I had. Some things about tax stabilization, but I really want to get to the, the resources. So there's a variety of resources out there in a variety of different ways. So one in the sort of planning context. The Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development Municipal Planning Grant Program, which this, the planning commission has a long history of utilizing municipal planning grants and being awarded them. This next round is March first, March thirty first, so it's around the corner. But they can, in twenty twenty, the fiscal year twenty four municipal planning grants funded the town of Chester doing a housing development feasibility study. So essentially development scenario work. I don't know if that's the right timing, but just knowing that's a source and that is, is a timing and an example of a community that undertook something of that sort. That project is very different than this project. It's a hundred and twenty-five acres of municipal land, municipal land that they're, they're looking at. But the, knowing that there's a resource that could assist development scenario work and, and, and provide some funding, I think is helpful. The next is neighborhood development area, so that you mentioned that just a moment ago. The NDA, the Neighborhood Development Area Program is run by the Agency of Commerce Community Development. And it's sort of a companion to Village Designation. So Warren Village has a designated Village Center. And Neighborhood Development Areas can take, can exist geographically within a quarter mile outside of a designated village area. And there's a variety of benefits, which I, later in my slides, I can go into some more detail on that. But some of the notes that I identified in there, so that the, the state has, is develop designation program, villages, neighborhood development areas, downtowns, and they're in the process of rebuilding that system. But there are benefits tied to that designation. So that's probably going to change in twenty twenty six. But getting in and getting in before they shut it down, which is at the end of twenty twenty five, can do things like limit water and wastewater fees for a developer. It limits Act two fifty jurisdiction. There's some other changes that have happened to legislature that also impact Act two fifty jurisdiction. But the NDA, the Neighborhood Development Area can be a benefit to the town to, to sort of move projects forward and create more predictability and reduce some barriers.
So that's a designation we would apply for?
Correct. The town.
And it can be within the downtown commercial.
It, it, it sort of sits outside of.
It's another circle around.
It's a circle around.
Oh, okay. So, yeah.
And, and it could, and, and, and any property, right, that makes sense in this context could be included. Our office, the Plan District Assisted Waitsfield, and they have a new NDA Neighborhood Designation Area, which is Irisville. So Waitzil Village is the village and Irisville is the NDA. Neighborhood Development Area is more than a quarter mile, and that provided access to funding for the wastewater project. So it can open up doors. So that's a program that, that, that's available. Vermont Housing Conservation Board has feasibility grants of twenty thousand dollars for projects that align with their affordable housing policy. And, and, and could, could assess assists as well. So these are some.
Notes of state.
Yes, Vermont Housing Conservation Board, which they state, they state kinda. And two other, like sort of local resources that I think are worth mentioning here and work that the Plan District's done. The two thousand twenty Matter Valley Housing Demand and Market Analysis work, which was completed in March of twenty twenty. So obviously, similarly, the numbers may have definitely changed, but, but the story is still the story. And the, and, and the issues are still there. And, and there's, it identified three recommended priorities for housing development projects as a result of the Housing Demand and Market Analysis. And those three are mixed income rental project oriented towards younger households. The, and it says the, the project would include affordable tax credit rents ranging up to full market rate rents and a mix of one, two and three bedroom units. The second priority housing development project is a rental project oriented towards low, low modern income seniors. And the project would include subsidies, affordable tax credits, rents and a mix of one, two bedroom units. And the third being an ownership project oriented towards first time home buyers looking up to a hundred and twenty percent of the median one twenty AMI. So those are recommendations that are in that, that, that report, that analysis. And there's a lot of information in the twenty twenty one. I also think it's worth mentioning the two thousand seventeen Matter Valley Housing Study, which is a broader look into the housing situation. It's at this point. Old, I would say, in, in many ways, but as a part of that project, we did a, we looked at housing opportunities and, and, and looked, looked at it through a development lens and did a Matter Valley Housing Opportunities Map, which created a way to determine the feasibility and suitability of potential properties for development. This property was not included because it wasn't available at the time. But the role of a municipality utilizing its land to leverage a project is consistent to one of the, one of the elements from, from that study. So a couple of resource guides that I wanted to highlight, Homes For All, the Vermont Homes For All Toolkit. This is a kind of brand spanking new. It came out, well, it came out just less than a year ago. And this was a project that the Agency of Commerce and Community Development did. It's mostly digital. They didn't make a lot of paper copies. And this is my, Sam brought this back from, from, from the release event. So I just want to make, make sure we get it back. But I'm happy to have folks take a look at it. But it's available digitally and the goals of this project was about building affordability, growing small developers, cultivating local support and empowering missing middle housing champions. And there's a builder's workbook, Missing Middle Homes Design Guide, the things related to the Vermont Architectural Vernacular, and sort of like looking at examples of what things can look like. And Vermont Community Infill Design Case Studies. So they looked at five different communities in the state and did an analysis of what infill opportunities are. And I think the project at the scale that we're talking about fits within sort of the, the thoughts that this was, which is essentially village scale, village scale on small lots, which mostly is multi-unit and multi-units that, that again, fit within our villages. And, and this goes into process. There's a, there's, I, I think this is a great resource to, to, to look at and to build off of. A few other resources that I have.
I liked it. Title, Vermont Housing Demystified?
Yeah, so Vermont Housing Demystified, which was thriving communities are product of the fair housing project of the Champlain Valley Office of Economic Opportunity. Trying my hardest not to use acronyms, but it is a C V O E O. Created an in-depth blog series in two thousand twenty-three, called Vermont Housing Demystified. It has all these different chapters. And one is about affordable housing. And I think it does a pretty good job of, of sort of explaining that context here. There is a Vermont Housing Resource and Rental Assistance Guide, which is a HUD document, which is now, is less interesting to read. But it gets into details around the different federal housing programs, like subsidized housing, emergency housing, so on and so forth. And I have a copy here, just another resource, Priority Housing Project Flow Chart that the state did essentially based on passage of Act, was it one ten? That, that essentially minimizes Act two fifty jurisdiction for certain types of housing projects in certain locations. And this is the flow chart related to that. But I'm going to make all this stuff available and these are all links. This slide is called Affordable Housing Funders. So I just sort of identified the sort of primary housing funders in the state of Vermont. The Vermont Housing Conservation Board, VHCV, established in the eighties, dual goal of housing and conservation. And they allocate state and federal funding to nonprofits, towns and different organizations. EverNorth Housing, which I mentioned before, formerly Housing Vermont, serves the broader Northern New England area. And they have staff raising capital, investing in building housing, so on and so forth. And then the Vermont Housing and Finance Agency, VHFA, established in nineteen seventy-four. Each state has a housing finance agency and this really gets into the low income housing tax credit programs and a lot of the other funding opportunities. And there. Yep, please.
What's the difference between EverNorth and Downstreet?
So Downstreet Housing and Community Development is the homeownership center and housing developer. So they, they are, there are ten? Eight in the state of different organizations like Downstreet. It originally was the Central Rock Community Land Trust. CVCLT was their old name. And they're a community land, land trust, building housing projects and homeownership and, and rental and managing. So they are developers and they access the funding. EverNorth is a funding entity providing support and a lot of the low income, the tax credit programs and other things that Downstreet utilizes is sort of through their, their partnership with EverNorth and, and the other, these large three. So. Please.
So, planning process is important and sort of the resources that you described. Everybody thinking about like, we want to build on that site. You know, ultimately, it's what you just talked about. It's like, it's probably partnering with one of the nonprofit developers who are experts in the development process that you've broadly been describing about how do we design, finance and permit, build and manage or sell the site. So, you know, sort of the broad picture that you just described. You know, if the community ultimately decides they want to go forward with building, like ten or something, I'm just making up. The nonprofit partner is going to be who you're going to want to like come together to put together the development program and the capital stack that you just sort of described. Like, I always feel like it feels like overwhelming when somebody starts to describe all of these various resources. That's where your development partner comes in because whether.
They know all this stuff.
They know.
And they take it all into consideration. They say, here's what we're going to do. This isn't something we do. Correct.
Yeah, I was mostly, I honestly, the reason why I was showing the complication is for that reason, is that there are people who specialize in this. It doesn't mean that Downstreet has to be the developer. They just are the largest developer who has these relationships and the pro forma and the experience in doing projects. Now, they also do projects where, of a certain scale, right? Because, because the numbers have to work out. And so that's why most of their projects are taking places in places like Berry, Montpelier, and the, the latest project is in Waterbury. In the old, and that is another example of, that's a town on site. It was the town garage, the town municipal building lot that then became a parking lot that now Downstreet is developing into eighteen units.
Who's doing two hundred and fifty units in Millbury?
I'll get to that.
Okay. So did Down, Downstreet did Wheeler Brook for Warren?
Yes.
Okay, so that was, that was eighteen or nineteen units.
Yes. And there is a story related to Wheeler Brook. And, and an experience there, which is, and the director of Downstreet, the person who became the director right at the time of the, that project was being finished, she actually came to a housing coalition meeting and said, because what people were saying about the project after it had started was that this perception that there were, there was vacancy, but yet there's a lot of need. And the, and that not everything was full in a short period of time, even though there was a lot of need in our community. And, and the director of Downstreet said at the, soon thereafter that they learned lessons from that experience. They tried utilizing a lot of tax credits. And they went a little bit too deep into that, which, which required getting the balance of sort of need and funding. They utilized, they leaned too heavily on federal tax credits.
So is there, does someone publish the lessons learned or document on this or is this?
No.
Word of mouth.
This, this was the director of, of, of Downstreet saying, we learn lessons and we don't do projects like that anymore. Because it.
What was the result of that? They couldn't, they couldn't, I think it was that they couldn't rent them because nobody made little enough money.
With a high enough need. So like a single mom with three kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look, right. The need was really high. And so it was essentially a very narrow window
Yeah.
for who was eligible. It was an eligibility window.
Consistent with many of the programs. So that's where the expertise of your.
Co-developer, your developer.
Your developer and their property management and expertise in leasing and processing applications. I mean, I could come and do a whole other night on that. That shouldn't be something that dissuades you. You've got a strong team that understands what they're doing and executes. The one other thing I, I want to just back up to some of your, one of your slides, you talked about some of the things that people would like to see, like, you know, a tax credit, a long-term housing tax credit project geared towards, you know, younger people. The federal and state programs bring with them fair housing. And so if you do it all private, you can rent or sell to anyone you want. But if you bring in the resources, you know, you are coming under the compliance framework of the programs. And so anyone can apply. And if they qualify in terms of household size and income, they can live there. The exception is doing senior housing. The one other thing that I think is worth mentioning, you know, when you're thinking about, are we going to do rental or are we going to do ownership or what, what income group are we going to target? Whatever the mix of variables are. A lot of times our work is driven by the federal and state or local policy where we're working, right? You're following the money. So if there's money available for building fifty-five plus senior rental housing, that may be an opportunity, you know, and somebody like a Downstreet is going to know sort of what's out there for the resources that are available. Maybe that's what you decide you're going to try and pursue here. You know, many other examples. But it's just, it's always a good thing to keep in mind that you can set as many goals as you want. But if nobody wants to fund that, you'll stay with a vacant site. If you start sort of talking with somebody like a Downstreet who's an experienced development partner and understands what the federal and state finding, financing priorities are and what is feasible. It helps oftentimes start to craft your project. I mean, I couldn't have gone into Amherst and built a hundred and twenty you know, affordable apartments. That's not what their master plan and their goal said they wanted. And so we said, fine, let us go start talking to the state. And we need to talk to our investors who will be part of the tax credit program. They may not want to do an eighty twenty deal. Those are riskier for them, lots behind sort of all that. But you know, that's where your experienced development partner kind of comes in and helps you think through what will, the feasibility of what will work.
Yeah. And a lot of that comes out of demand, doesn't it? For a particular area as far as.
Usually a lot of the policy, federal, state or local policy has been given some analysis of demand. Or, you know, policy. So hey, it's just an overarching comment when, as you start to think that sometimes you don't want to always just chase the money, but sometimes you do because that's how you get something done.
Yeah. So, right. Exactly. Yeah. I mean, I'm saying start with the purpose and the goal, but also be open to where, where the opportunities are. And it's not, yeah.
So I'm curious what your question is with regard to housing creation around the, the why. I mean, is that
Right.
self-evident to me, but maybe.
Sure. Well, well, really it's, it's the planning commission. It's the town, right? It's not mine, but, but it is a collective. And I think that the, the town plan goes pretty far into identifying those things. But is it, 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 you know, what is the purpose of the housing? Is it for people to live and work in it? Right. Is it fit in the workforce housing bucket? Is it senior housing? You know, the analysis identified three different areas for which housing, where there's housing need. And maybe it's as broad as all housing is good housing, or maybe it's something more narrow that curtails to, to a need that Warren has.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that point, Josh. That's okay.
Yeah.
I'm getting a little bit of feedback when I talk, but okay, I'll try, I'll try to get through. I also had a question for you, Josh, but this is a really great point that was just made. I think what you just said reflected our conversation when we met. And, and I, I do think it's a really good example. It's a good answer to your question, which is there's a difference between there, for example, being senior housing there versus rental housing for workforce versus housing for first time home buyers, which of course is an entirely different model. And, you know, I think given our housing market and given the fact that the town owns the land, we're in a position where I think we can at least set, you know, that kind of general intention. And that to me, thinking about, you know, as a town, what we want in the middle of the village, it's consistent with all sorts of other sorts of things we've done around public lands that I, I, I really appreciated the point about the why. Because I think the market will bear it out no matter what direction we take it. I mean, the, the bigger question to me is like whether there will be public money for any of those things. And if not, then what the market looks like. And I guess that brings me back to my question for you, Josh, which is, you know, we just got through the governor's address. And I'm just curious how you assess the current state policy. And so as we think about an opportunity like this in Warren, how does, how would you line it up in terms of their priorities? Like what's the language they're talking about? How do they think about sort of addressing this problem and, and, and how might we kind of see it, see this project through their lens?
I mean, I, I think, well, great question, Megan. Thank you for making that point and asking that question. I think from a, a statewide perspective, and specifically the governor's more recent budget address and talking about housing. And he talked about a few different things. He talked about investment in infrastructure, but also housing. But any funder is, is essentially, it's a game of betting on something that they think is going to work. Right? So predictability is a really important piece of the puzzle. And, and, and so the question is what makes projects successful? And I think what makes projects successful are the things that Darcy said previously. Having leadership, being a sort of a housing forward community that has clear regulations and is, is a champion. But I also think it's the partnerships with those who have done projects and building these, a project off of those successes. Successful projects and having those partnerships and having a project in the pipeline. None of this is going. And so building the relationships with Downstreet or, or others to say that, you know, and I say that, you know, Downstreet is the largest developer and they have the expertise. I think that it, it makes, there's a reason why they're the largest developer. And, but having that conversation and inviting them here to say, hey, help us understand. You know, when you're looking at a project, what are you looking for? And what are the different types, types of characteristics? And there are examples that are outside of that framework that are private developers that are developing projects, meeting these goals, working with municipalities. At the end, I have a handful of different projects I want to highlight that I think are, are worth exploring to sort of see how different communities were wrestling with the same type of question. But I, you know, I think that there's the sort of the, the why, the how and the what through the process. And these are all just sort of pieces of that puzzle. But we are, you know, in the same way that they're looking for communities that are predictable, we're looking for I think a federal government and federal funding that's predictable as well to help us understand if that makes sense. So it's a, you know, it's a dance and there's a lot of unknowns. But I think communities that are clear about what their intention and have done that work to identify what we're doing, why we're doing it. And there is broad-based support for it. That's a better bet than one where there's a bunch of question marks or there's a track record of infighting or there's, you know, so on and so forth.
Yeah.
I want to show a few more things, two things that are definitely going to overwhelm you on the funding landscape. This is a federal and state housing fund resources in Vermont. List, which again, it's not showing up well on the screen and I, and I'll make all this available as well as the Vermont Housing Chart, which gets into like all the different programs and the eligibility. The bottom line is there are a lot of resources and a lot of things that may or may not fit with what Warren is looking to do and, and aspires to do. So I think identifying sort of where, what that direction is, is an important piece of the puzzle. So I've identified a handful of different examples of land, land donations for housing projects out of a variety of different scales that are in, in and around here. One is in Montpelier. It's now known as the Country Club Road Site, previously known as the Montpelier Alps Club. And that's a multi-use project where the city of Montpelier is collaborating with Downstreet Housing Community Development to do this, this multi-mixed use project, which will, they're in the, in, in the design phase, but exploring housing was a priority for, for what they envisioned there. Berry, the city of Berry, the Seminary Street Lot Development, which was a downtown parking lot, which was, that, that was sold for a dollar to Downstreet and, and a collaboration with D E W Construction. And they are in the process of turning those parking lots into thirty units, utilizing low income housing tax credits. The city of St. Albans has, they've built a hundred and eighty-eight units of housing in the last twelve or so years in their downtown and their municipality served as sort of the lead in a lot of those projects. They were actually purchasing properties, cleaning them up, packaging them and then working with and inviting developers and doing RFPs. Chester, Vermont, that was the two thousand and four housing, sorry, twenty twenty-four Housing Development Feasibility Study that was funded through municipal planning grant. Looking at a hundred and twenty acres of townland that's sort of in the early stage. The Middlebury Project Stone Crop Meadows Housing Project Summit Properties. So that's two hundred and fifty-four home project on thirty-five acres, a collaboration between Middlebury College and the developer. So that's not municipal, but that, that's sort of a, another player in the mix. And Londonberry, Jamaica, Weston, and Win Hall, that's a link to an article about this Wyndham Regional Commission exploration of, of housing and working with, and doing some visualization exercises. So these are just a couple of examples that I threw together that I think are, again, nothing's a perfect fit, but seeing how how some of our neighbors are tackling such a question, utilizing the same landscape that we have. Sam and I are, I didn't get Sam a chance to talk at all.
You're good.
But, but, but we are here and, and happy to help. And I, and yeah.
Why didn't you finish?
Okay. So one, it, things like lining up, we're, we're happy to help with grant applications or things like the neighborhood development area, if that's something that you want to explore. The N D A. So when I wrote down some additional notes on the N D A, so there's interim Act two fifty exemptions. Qualified mixed income projects are exempt from Act two fifty regulations. Act two fifty projects not qualifying for the exemption receive a dis- discount on its application fees. A N R fees for wastewater review are capped at fifty dollars for projects that receive sewer allocation from an approved municipal system. So we've got it. Correct.
There was something, and one of them.
There's exemption from the land gains tax, limitation on appeals of conditional use permits for residential development, and municipalities receive priority considerations for state grants.
Sounds like a deal.
Something about our municipal wastewater system, the fact that it doesn't include water, that we've got individual wells that makes that part of that.
So there was, yeah, there was this water wastewater thing and it's an outstanding question that I think the legislature was going to wrestle with.
I hope so because I've, I've heard about it, been to a couple of seminars on it. And I asked the question, knowing that we only had half of it.
Yeah.
And I believe you're right. I think now that you've mentioned, I think they were going to relook at it.
Yeah, I, I believe I, that, that, that was my recollection. Yeah.
Joshua, can I ask one question? So historically, we had a Mad River Valley Housing Coalition that was assisted by the Planning District.
That's correct.
The Housing Coalition sort of dissolved or went, whatever you want to call it, is no longer active. I, one of these guides suggested it was very important and you've alluded to the fact that perhaps the Planning Commission is not the body that drop, you know, that there, that perhaps another committee of experts formed. I think one of these documents talks about perhaps Warren Housing, rather than, you know, a Mad River Valley Housing Coalition, a Warren Housing Coalition consisting of prospective renters and interested parties. I, I, anyway.
Do we need something like that?
Well, yeah.
And when do we need something? It's a question of structure, right? And, and voices in the room. And it may or may not be, you know, it may make sense to have this sort of smaller group of different perspectives. Some of them may be expertise and some of them might be local voices and, and, and those are looking for housing to be a part of that conversation. There was a Mad River Valley Housing Coalition started in nineteen eighty-five, eighty-eight, if my memory is, is correct. And there was a reboot of the Housing Coalition in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. And part of the idea was to be a voice for housing and to, to be a place to concentrate energy towards projects and be an advocate for housing when there are projects happening and, and be a connector with the different resources that are outside of our valley and, and those within our valley. And it went into a quiet state year, two years ago, actually. Perry Bigelow, who lives in Warren, was the.
Is the treasurer.
Is the treasurer. And he and I have a meeting tomorrow to talk about the status of housing coalition. So I, I think when and what, I think the real, I, I think there's work with the Planning Commission and, and there's work for the town to do, to identify what its goals are. And at some point, having some resources available to, and, and a focus to be able to focus on a project. And like if, as for instance, you want to have Downstreet here or having other funders or others, other communities, you know, want to go and take a tour of a community project in Berry or, or Middlebury or something of that sort. Is that, the question is, is, is that a planning commission project or is that something that's, that could fit beyond that? And it may be something, you know, asked for so that the select board creates or what have you.
Well, I mean, the fact, the fact that we have two select board members here tonight, I think this shows great interest. And I guess what, what I, what I'd like to do is kind of sit down and with you or maybe, maybe a group of interested parties, maybe it's not us, maybe it's select board members, but start to put out like, you know, obviously talk to Downstreet is something that's needs to be is high on the priority list and sounds like early in the priority list and start to put down sort of things we can check off as we move down the per hop supplying for this neighborhood. And maybe that's more important and needs to be done before we talk to Downstreet.
Is that close to me then?
But I'd like, I'd like to talk to you.
That, that's a slam. I'd a hundred percent think that getting an N D A designation for Warren is, is a, is a positive, positive. And like I said, the program is shifting and changing. And what does it end up being? Like there's some question marks, but it doesn't hurt.
No, no.
So, so I guess what I'm saying is it would be great to work with you, not that you do all this work, but you tell us what, what, what are the steps? And, and of course we'll lean on Darcy too, if she's willing to help. What are the steps?
I'm happy to continue being part of the conversation and see how we can, can assist. I mean, you know, if it's an N D A thing, we're happy to put some of that on our shoulders and do some of the mapping work and other types of things if, if that's a direction you want to go in. But also there's that bigger conversation of connecting the, the different parties together and understanding what the opportunities are. I mean, I think it's, it's a mixture of like, what is the goal and the interest? What are the opportunities and what are the, you know?
And I think, and I think again, having Devin and Camilla here, there's a conversation that should take place from their perspective. Who do they want to do what? You know, that's all shut up now. Thank you. Camilla, go ahead, please.
I, I just wanted to go back to the, what I, what I think I heard Joshua saying is maybe the, again, the place to start and the community conversation is the why, you know, what why are we, why are we pursuing this? And then and then we build the, once we have the, the, the goal, then we build the team to pursue the goal. So is that, does that make sense to start with the, that, that community conversation?
I, I, yes, I think that's the right order.
Before we talk to Downstreet, they question Downstreet, don't we need Downstreet to help us articulate what we can reasonably do?
These are.
You gotta get.
I think we've already started to gather the data of, of why or the information of why as a community with our, some of our visioning efforts, with the work that we do. as a community, with our, some of our visioning efforts, with the work that we do in all the departments. And, yeah, I think we could come with that preloaded for an establishment like that to help us get through the how to the what.
I agree, Adam. I think we already have the why. I think that you've done a great job of getting the community to say, what do you need? And everybody kept saying, we need housing, and then saying it since, what, twenty seventeen, twenty ten? Camilla, I hear you, and I always appreciate the way that Camilla wants the community to be involved and communicate with them and have like a really open conversation about it, because it's so key for buy-in, and yes, we need that, so keep that happening, but we know why.
Yeah.
Just start doing it.
I don't think anybody I've ever talked to for any reason doesn't agree we need housing.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's.
I mean, it's all over the news, it's all over every article, it's everywhere.
As far as the why, which also kind of segues into the what, as to how people are going to react to what we end up doing over there.
Right, the why of a particular, why this project?
Why this project?
That's what I was getting at.
I think I I got you on that.
This is an existing neighbor, small failed neighborhood with with adjacent to the elementary school, the walk to downtown. I mean, everything about it is screaming out.
Bases are loaded.
Why would we put a bunch of houses in there?
Yeah.
Well, if I could add two points to this. One is that I do think there there is a universal interest in housing, but I think this conversation is established that housing means different things to different people, and housing can be at different levels and of different types. But one of the points I tried to make, and I've heard other people make, is that we have an opportunity to be intentional about the type of housing we want there, even if it's sort of a subset like senior housing or workforce housing or some other type. That doesn't need to be something we need to stick our finger in the air and figure out what the market wants. We can sort of figure out what's consistent with the vision of the community, and I think to Camilla's point, that is something the community can help with. But the other piece is, or or community input should be part of. The other piece, though, is having talked to people who, you know, live in the, you know, live near the school or other parents about this project, and just trying to get people interested in this project. I think there's a huge amount of benefit of just getting things for people to react to. So for as much as we can kind of get in this chicken and egg thing about, you know, who to get involved and how, I I think the neighborhood development thing makes sense, and we should just do that and and understand what y'all can do and what we need to help with. But beyond that, like, I really do think we need someone who can sort of help us say, here are a couple of different scenarios. Here's what communities like yours have done with land like this that could work. Uh, here's what that could look like. And I know some of this has been done before, but I also recognize that's not what we need. But I think giving something to people to react to, to get inspired by, would be important. Final thing, don't forget, this is the good stuff to go with the cost of the town garage. Right? Because like, the more we can tell a story about this being made possible by the town garage, the more I think it helps people see why the town garage is such an important thing too. Now, it's not like an if, it needs to happen, but I'm just saying, like, the more we can tell a good story about this, the better.
One thing I would add is just picking up on some of your points and then to your question involving somebody like the Downstreet. You might want to think you're workforce housing or senior housing, what have other communities done? But I think to your points, Downstreet is going to come with a lens for the landscape now and feasibility. Understanding the lay of the land for how you put together the capital stack the town wants to go on the first-time homebuyer ownership route, helping you think a little bit through what that would look like, helping you think about what the landscape would look like for resources for a rental project. So I agree with Maycom that it's important for everyone to think about what they would want there and why. But I think understanding from somebody like a Downstreet who really does understand the financial landscape and costs and feasibility will really just inform what's realistic. Because I think one of the challenging things in communities is that is when they spend a lot of time on sort of what they would love to see, which is an important visioning process, but then there's, you've got to marry that with what's feasible.
The implementation of that.
And, you know, I always encourage communities, spend as much time as you want on any of the above, but until you find that intersection, you can just stay in the planning versus actually creating the housing.
I think that's really important. Thank you for saying that. I think we need to keep that in mind, because we've been planning and visioning for decades.
Yeah, and they will, and I should also say, like, I'm not advocating the, doing a whole planning process to ask the whole community, why should we do this? It's about being able to articulate it clearly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? And and I agree, I think that you have all the pieces here for that to happen, but to be able to articulate it clearly to yourselves, to a developer, to the community of why we're doing this project and what are the things that are important to us.
Yeah.
And being able to articulate what's important and how this project sort of makes that a reality.
So really defining that mission statement.
Thank you so, so much.
So we could build fourteen S T R's just like that, so.
Yeah.
It's guaranteed that it won't be an S T I.
Are there any other questions for Joshua at this time?
Just to not lose cycles on the national, the the neighborhood designation, is that something like you need the select board to like consider or do something, or is it more like?
With the Plan Commission.
Yeah, let's get that going right. Yes, let's get that going right away.
And Josh, just to be, to to be clear, you said you could potentially take on some of the.
There's a lot of side conversations going on right now, so let's just pause a second.
Now, I'll I'll get together with Joshua on the NDA, because that's something that the two of us can.
Yep.
Happen.
So so Darcy's has to go. Joshua, thank you very much for an excellent presentation. I'm not dismissing you quite yet, because I think other people have questions or comments.
Yeah.
So do you have time?
Yes.
Okay, so who else has questions or comments for Joshua?
Uh, well, I know it's getting towards the end of the meeting, it's getting late, I don't want to hold you guys too too much, but I'm just so excited about all this. So first of all, thank you to everyone for this meeting, because I came into it with a lot of understanding of the why and a lot of ideas and understanding of the possibilities as to what the missing link to the puzzle was the how of like, and from your complicated tables and charts and the web of possibilities, it's it's not surprising that it's confusing to figure out the how, but it's a little bit less confusing to me after this meeting. So I really greatly appreciate it. I think there's a lot of good resources in there to dig into. And so the other thing that I appreciate is how uh, we're all sort of on the same page and we're speaking the same language. A lot of overlap between Darcy's presentation and your presentation and some of the things that I was thinking about prior to this meeting. So basically, if we think about the aims and intentions of all of this, that's sort of like what you're touching on with the why. And with our town visioning and pasturets, decades of pasturets, we have figured out the why, and there's a list that we have recorded with Jim's takeaways, my notes from the visioning session, and Camilla's handwritten notes from the visioning session, which we could utilize as a resource. Yeah, I basically just started thinking about yeah, not only like what is lacking and what we're looking to provide for the community, but what has already been accomplished as a community, and what is in need of fostering intentional maintenance and growth for the sake of momentum as a town. And that's, you know, our recreational trails and our local thriving businesses like Lawson's and Mad River Glen and Sugar Bush and Fifth Quarter and all of these places that we should be encouraging and fostering the growth of, and part of that would be providing affordable housing, transportation, health, wellness, safety, well-being, quality of life, all of those things. So, yeah. What resources do we have? We have the town-owned land, we have communities, we have nonprofits such as Downstreet, we have Yestermaro, we have
Wastewater Treatment.
Wastewater Treatment endeavors. I think I'm definitely Team Jim on affordable housing is in Irisville, and that growth and development can help on a valley-wide scale. But then also certain parts of that growth can possibly be applied into a smaller hub here in Warren, specifically Warren Village, starting from this town garage site. And so if this space gets freed up, I would think of it as like a mini hub that is an accessory to the main hub of Irisville. And my vision for a potential what would be a bit more of a hybrid or a mixed-use model where maybe Irisville is the place that has a majority of the housing and the majority of businesses and a majority of the infrastructure, but there is a smaller percentage of it also available here in Warren. For example, if you have an acre and a half or potentially two acres, uh, from what I've read and looked through with old, with maps and the GIS, I think it is possible to squeeze in maybe two acres of developable, developable property here on this site. And so if that means we threw around the ballpark of six units for an acre and a half, let's say it's two acres, what if it was six units and space for like a pharmacy and a another small business and like a bus stop and a bike rack. And, right, and all of that on the site, it brings more reason for people to be on that site other than just for housing. And that allows us to utilize our resources to the, to, to its highest capacity. For example, in the gnarliest winter conditions, when that plow truck driver comes in and plows that entry into that site, that driveway into the site, and someone walks, shovels the walkway for that site, it's not only for someone who's working there, but also a business owner, also someone trying to get to Irisville. And so it just kind of.
And and a consumer.
Exactly.
The school.
Yeah, all the things.
Exactly, yeah. And so bear with me, this is kind of scatterbrained, but it's going somewhere. Yeah, so we got the feedback from from the community, and so the next steps would be to provide an implementation strategy. And some of that is available through the resources that I received today this meeting. And I really agree with Darcy's idea of incremental supply. I think in our small town, we don't need to go zero to one hundred right away. I think we can do things in incremental steps, and that will open up a lot more possibilities for us, and and it could create this series of events that allows for this big project to seem less daunting and a little bit more accessible or possible to do. Some things that, or some design ideas are like, what if we had a plan for stage development of row housing, where you start with a couple of units and each unit has a firewall in between it, and you, we have the funds for, let's say, three from the get-go, and then we get funds for a fourth and a fifth. And then the sixth is the pharmacy, for example, you know, we don't have to throw it all out there and have it all happen at once, it can happen in stages. What do we need that is maybe specific to our area? Do we need a big giant housing complex? Or can we use a vernacular model that we see commonly throughout our structure of our community, such as the typical Vermont house with the outbuildings with the barn? How can we kind of apply a model that's already working to some degree and customize it to meet the need, our current needs? There, yes, go ahead.
I just want to stop you for a second and ask a question, because the way you're talking about this project assumes someone's making these design decisions and controlling what we're building and how. And I'm wondering who you think that body is?
I have no idea. I'm just throwing out ideas and I'm, I'm at the stage of
That's a how question.
Throwing stuff, yes.
Right, right.
Exactly. Throwing stuff on the wall, seeing what sticks.
Yeah.
Sort of, you know, starting with the, you know, why and working through the rest. So I'm sorry that I don't have that answer.
No, it's fine. I think I I was feeling a lot more like you were, you're, you're you're looking at it more of what you want to build as opposed to why. I love that. I'm a builder. Like, I I hear you, I love these ideas, and I know that on a town level, there's very little interest in being landlords.
Right.
Right? So the idea of like somebody saying, here's what we want it to look like, here's what we want it to be, et cetera, et cetera, is not necessarily something that I think the town will have control over.
Yeah.
And so that's what I'm wondering as far as this process.
I'm not sure where the control is and how to take control o- over it. All I know how to do is throw out concepts and ideas to open up different pathways and different opportunities and different possibilities. And so I don't have a preference as to what actually happens there. I just want something to happen there. I I want it to to get out of the like, hey, we've wanted this for so long, and finally get to a place of like, this is happening, you know?
It seems to me, Adam, that when we have that discussion with Downstreet, whoever the we is, you're someone who ought to be at that table, and then you can hear what they say, what they're recommending is feasible, and then you put that into your, your, your worrying mind. And then then we can start, we can start spitballing these ideas, which I think are really, or I I'm not sure, I'll be the one spitballing these ideas. You can share some of your visions and see how that, and then we can, I don't, you know, I I I think.
I would love that. I would love to be a fly on the wall. I would love to see where this can lead to.
Let's make sure.
Because there could be, like I said, there could be row housing opportunities, or it could be the the house outbuilding barn, or it can be prefabricated or modular housing that's very popular these days of things being built in a very safe and closed environment at counter height. And then shipped to a site and craned, or come as a pod and be dropped onto a a foundation that was prepared for that.
Yeah, the site is unique enough, and the contours are such that you could almost put a multi-story apartment building there, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, it's really open. I mean, it's really open to, it's really open to uh a broad spectrum of uh design possibilities there, I would say.
I I don't want to be a jerk, I don't want to be a jerk and cut off the design discussions. I think those are really going to be super important. But
Let's It's going into the what?
Yeah.
As opposed to sticking with the why.
Can we table that for now, but make sure you're a part of that conversation?
Yeah.
And if I can point out one thing, I mean, what I think is kind of awesome that I saw happen here is that you identified a perspective on the uh uh on the how and the sort of like municipal interest to be a landlord. Right? And and like, I think that's something that you marked down somewhere and said, that's one of the considerations.
Yeah.
Right? I think through these types of dialogues, we can, we 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 share ideas and we have different perspectives and and say, well, you know what? There's something with that that either feels great or is uncomfortable. And 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 name it and identify and write it down, so that it's a part of the discussion going forward.
Yeah.
And I think that that's part of the value of having multi-stakeholders being being a part of that.
And I think that leads to the importance of sort of what we were identifying as what does this task force look like, right? Like, and and I think we should continue that conversation. I will say, and I think Camilla will second this, that I'm not sure that our select board, which will soon be only three of us, has much capacity. Too many more things. Happy to allow the task force to live here and one or the other participate, but
Well, we want
That's why, that's why it's so exciting to me that the, there's so much energy and enthusiasm on the PC. Because the select board is not, for a little while, going to have the depth to maybe take it where we need to go. And and just to remind everybody, and and I realize this piece is important. We we don't have a place to build this housing unless we get the town garage built. So all of my energy right now is getting to the new, to moving the town garage so that that can happen. So if there's a group behind the scenes that's preparing for that, that's great. So just, I agree with Devin, but you know, enthusiasm is great.
Draw out something that you're saying there that you guys have mentioned a few times, and this is a conversation we've had on the task force, right? It's like, there has been noise from constituency that they'd like to potentially see the sale of that property to offset the cost for the building of the town garage. And I'm hearing from this group, this like, and and Megan said earlier, this like, hey, this should be part of the settlement. And while I very much agree with that and want to see that happen, we have to sell that as a selling point.
Yeah.
So if someone is able to, you know, Jim, maybe you're doing this because I know you're working with Camilla a little bit about this presentation at the town uh a town meeting, but like, if that, if if y'all can make a pitch for that, if you can present something that that helps sort of get our constituency behind the idea that this piece of land has more value than its saleable value, that would be helpful.
Are they mutually exclusive though?
Go ahead.
Sorry, say that again.
Are they mutually exclusive? That we couldn't sell the land to developers to build this housing?
Most, most housing development happened when the developer buys the property and puts up houses on it. Now, we could make some money and maybe we could give some money and get a tax credit or as a town or something. You know, who knows? But I I'm sure there's a lot of different ways of doing it. Us giving the land isn't the only way this project works.
Yeah.
But I would I would go back to again, we ought to talk to Downstreet
Yeah.
as soon as possible, because there is, if we sell the land to the highest bidder, right? There is, which always happens in town. Uh and there's good reasons why it happens. It makes good economic sense. But also there's a risk of losing control
Yeah.
over what goes, what happens there. And we and we know that if it goes to the highest bidder, often it's a big second home.
Can I just kind of jump in here?
Megan needs to jump in.
First of all, I I certainly don't think not having any rentable housing for workforce makes any economic sense. But you know, I think that the very basic, the very basic spectrum here is either getting the most money for the parcel or getting, you know, some other outcome. And this is why I think it's really important that Josh put his finger on this notion of why. And I get that different boards are different capacities, but this is very consistent with the like, the town plan and public policy, which is like, we could just sell it to people who had put our Airbnbs on it and make a ton of money. Be awesome. You know, I bet, you know, and I bet be get a really good, you know, thing. We could probably work out a deal to improve our sewer and whatever. So, but that's not what we want to do because it doesn't make sense for our community. And and I, so this is the part that I I think is getting lost is like, what do we want there? Um and how do we communicate that? And while I hear that there's some people who are like, well, we should just sell it to offset the the garage, like, okay, I mean, there's people bring these things up all the time. Uh whether or not they're out there, we should have that view. And so I'm, I'd love to help with that. It sounds like we have this milestone coming up with the town meeting. So if there's something we want to do ahead of that, like, we should just get very clear on what that looks like, because that's in a week.
I'm I'm sorry, Megan, I don't, I'm not sure what you're what, what is, what is it that you think we're preparing for?
Earlier Devon was speaking about how she's hearing from people who think we should just, that the parcel should just be sold to offset the cost of the garage.
I I think that certainly I was one of the people that said, there are there are different options for what we do with that parcel. It's not a, you know, this is, this is what we're going to do with it. There are, there are different options for it. So, yeah. And then
So there there is the position.
I'm sorry, I I thought Devon was saying she wanted something, to say something at town meeting. I I'm sorry if I misunderstood that.
Uh but what I I hear the commonality that one of the options is to sell it to a developer who who we've selected, right?
Right.
That's an option. We don't have to take that option.
To develop housing.
That's right. Yeah, no, it may be best to sell it. I'm just saying like, the highest use would be all the Airbnb. I'm just saying like, what do we want it to be? We'll inform who we sell it to, even if selling it is required to make the outcome. I hear you. It may be that the one dollar lease or we sell it or we keep, uh whatever. I'm just saying that like, who we sell it to. We will get more money for worse outcomes, is my view. But I just think we're important. We have like a clear idea of what we want to see. There isn't just about the most money.
Right.
Then she wanted to talk about that, so maybe I missed.
What I've learned from you is the yes and, right? This is a yes and situation where, yes, we, one option is certainly to sell it. And something really good could come out of selling it to a developer who shares our vision. Okay?
And I don't think we would, based on what I heard Darcy say, that they, that, you know, her company works with people. And they try to get what works, what's costly and and feasible to work with what the vision is
The specific needs of their client.
Exactly, which in this case would be the town.
Right.
So the town has the ability to go into a process where where it's working with Downstreet. Say, this is what we need and want, and this is what it should look like, down to the point that it's not going to be short-term rentals. There are going to be certain restrictions.
Sure.
You want to have a quarter of that. So it's, and that may be that we also the developer buys the land.
Yeah.
But they do what we have asked.
Yes, I think we all, the one thing I do want to, that Megan was, I think, offering to help with, if needed. I heard Megan say he was willing to help. And I guess my question would be, is, you know, is is anyone accepting? I mean, Camilla, Jim, do you need help? Or do you feel like you've got this?
Right now, yeah, right, right now, I I met with Jim and Jim last Friday to kind of um go over my concept. They fed me, they they had some feedback. They fed me some questions that that they thought the public would want answered. Uh I am meeting on Wednesday with Luke, uh I believe, and Rebecca uh to put a presentation together that then the select board, all of this has to be done in a week. That that the select board is going to have to, members of the select board are going to have to review and thumbs up, thumbs down in order for us to present at town meeting next Tuesday. So
I'm sorry, I missed the the most important part, Camilla. Is this like the bond and like how you're structuring it or is it?
We, this, this is, no, this is a presentation um to answer questions that we expect from people about why are you doing this? Why do we need it? What, you know, all of those kinds of things. So um there
Sorry.
The intent, no, that's great. The intent is to to have the schematics uh on the wall. We're actually talking about creating us kind of a one-page flyer uh with just some basic information. Uh with a link to the presentation that we'll be doing at town meeting so that people who are just voting and don't come to town meeting can take that home with them. It's it's just a, it's an engaging, an informational um presentation to engage, to start engaging the public uh in preparation for m- more hearings, public hearings, more information coming out before we have a bond vote, before we propose, propose a bond, bond vote. Um I don't think, Devin, uh tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we're going to have a number at town meeting. Revised number from the last number at town meeting.
Not, not to my knowledge.
I don't think we should. So I just had, I just had an incredible flash. Joshua was very helpful in the Wakefield bond passage, right? So it might be helpful to talk to Joshua if you haven't already and talk about the steps that were done in Wakefield so that they had a successful bond vote.
When that happens.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, wh- when the time is right for that, but I'm happy to chat. I mean, I
Yeah.
People have had a good part of successful bond votes, but 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 we had a very clear strategy for that bond vote. Um uh and uh and there's a lot of yeah, there's a lot of intention in the way in which we framed the conversation in advance in order to inform people and to anticipate the flies and the ointment and those types of things. So if there's, if if I can be useful that in that way.
Yep, that would be great. Yep, definitely.
Yeah, it's very helpful to see people who find the right process to to implement. Um and so, yeah, I think that um one more comment that I just wanted to touch on. Um I I I think it's, it's I think that there are more um options as to how than just like sell the land or what have you. I was uh curious as to the possibilities of things such as setting up uh rent-to-buy options or uh owner-builder potential or things of that nature. I'm sure I'll find some more in Joshua's resources and Sam's resources that can help lead me down that path. Thank you to the select board for working with a smaller group. I know it's um must be hard.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
What about this possibility? One thing that the planning commission talked about was going to Sugar Bush, Mad River, Lawson's, you know, a bunch of different local groups and saying, how would you like to get a unit down in Warren?
Yes.
That that you guys could help us finance and uh we'll build you a unit for one of your employees. Is that, is that?
I think that that's the kind of creative problem solving that makes a project a reality, right? I mean, what are the resources that are here to make this happen? And part of what Mason was highlighting before is that we have these structures and funding mechanisms and there's a question mark about them.
Yeah.
Right? And so the like, in the face of that, what do we have here? And 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 I think that that, you know, and that that's my only hesitance about talking to Downstreet early is that they have a model and a product, right? And and I'm going to be completely blunt, in my experience with Warren, products don't really fit here just the way they were o- o- off the shelf, right?
Yeah.
You, you, yeah, right?
Yeah.
For the betterment of the community.
Yeah.
Right?
I agree.
And, you know, I I think about the Main Street Reconstruction Project down there. Right? We had a design and then we got the money for it, then you're like, wait a minute, we want to, we want to go back to that design. And you did. And and we were better because of it. And so that's why I'm saying, understand what it is you're trying to do, to then explore what those options are. Because if you, you know, there's a off-the-shelf a- approach that has worked in a lot of communities and that very well might work here.
Yeah.
But but but
I think we have to have our
And I think, I think it will work, and I'm sure of that, only because everyone is aware of the extreme, extreme demand for it. So it's, it's not like we're making up a product that's n- necessary. It's very necessary. And so if it's implemented, it will be successful. Um one of the first steps to any sort of possibility on this site is to get the current usage off of it to a uh a site that's more appropriate for it. So thank you to everyone who's on the committee and doing the work to move the current
No, but Adam, I totally agree. I totally uh echo that, but I also salute people throwing out a little bit of vision and being like, what about a pharmacy? And just like throwing, putting out stuff, man, that's like, I've been trying to think about what would be fun and interesting to me.
It is nine ten, it's nine ten PMI. No. Yes, let's uh, let's end the housing portion. Thank you so much. Thank you, Joshua.
Thank you, guys.
Camilla, before you go, can you give us a one minute on the status of the STRs? Where are we with the STR ordinance?
I believe it's sort of similar to the Luder thing. Um the people who are reviewing it uh with the LCT uh is reviewing it. They said March, I believe, because they're backed up. They don't have staff.
And I heard
My recollection. Is Devon still there?
I heard
We lost Devon.
We heard from Sharon this morning, and she expects to have something.
That'd be great.
That's the one, Sam. Our meeting has descended into chaos.
Yes, apparently.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any other urgent business that anyone else discussed? Okay, can anyone make a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second to adjourn? All in favor, please say hi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, have we adjourned?
Here's the
Nine eleven, we're done.
What, what about this?
Yeah.